All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of Richfield. It's December 12th of 2023 and 7:00 PM. And if you are able, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we're going to open up the open forum. If you are online and you wish to call into the open forum, you can dial 1-415-655-0001, use webinar access code 26323693070, and password 1234. Is there anyone, City Clerk Leslie, that's on the line right now?
There is not.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for open forum? All right, we'll give it about 30 seconds and see if anyone calls in. So we'll ask one more time if there's anyone present that would like to speak at the open forum. All right. So we'll close the open forum. If we get a call, just let us know and we can just be flexible with that. Next, we're going to move to the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of November 28th, 2023, special city council meeting of November 28th, 2023, which was the truth in taxation hearing, and the city council meeting of November 28th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any corrections, changes? All right, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved all three sets of minutes. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Mayor, could I ask, on open forum, I was told by at least one resident that they submitted comments to be read. Do we still do that, right?
Yes, is there somebody that submitted comments that we didn't know about?
There are, my apologies.
Oh, okay.
That is totally my mess. Let me get them up.
So while you're doing that, can we approve the agenda and then we'll go back to the submitted comments?
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, thank you, Councilmember Hayford-Larry. I wasn't aware that there were any that were waiting to be read. So we'll back up to open forum. And meanwhile, has anyone called in for open forum?
There has not been.
All right. And then, City Manager Rodriguez, you have the comments?
I am trying to find them. Yes, it's from, my name is Henrik Koakowski. I live at 6721 Lakeview Avenue, and I am relatively new, May 2021, Richfield resident. I was attracted to the city by its great pedestrian, cycling, and automotive infrastructure. I am urging the council to support lowered speed limits, both in the citywide proposal and the 30 miles per hour zone on 77th Street, because I think this will help further all three modes of transportation. I enjoy walking and biking around Richfield, but there are few streets, 77th Street included, that make me less than comfortable. By and large, I am very proud of our automotive infrastructure, like the roundabouts and the road service quality. However, one area that could be improved is road speed, and at a relatively low cost to me, the taxpayer. If residents need to go much faster, there is a highway that runs directly parallel that the state is pouring millions into expanding. 77th Street is a wall, figuratively and literally, and its high-speed limit is part of that. It is not reasonable to set it at 35 miles per hour when the rest of the city, even major streets like Lyndale, will be 25. Although 30 miles per hour is still faster than most of the city, it is at least, it at least provides a consistent, fair approach for the street from west to east Richfield. We have more to do, but this is an important first step to express that we expect drivers in our community to drive slower and safer. For example, I would love to see more effective means of slowing the speeds on our streets with proven traffic calming infrastructure changes. But once again, this is an important first step. Thank you, and please support 30 miles per hour for 77th Street. And then there's another one.
My name is Brendan Caneely. I live at 7114 Columbus Avenue. I am a Richfield resident and planning commission member, and I am writing to express my support for the city council's effort to lower speeds in Richfield, specifically the action to set 77th Street at 30 miles per hour. Richfield is a wonderful place to explore by foot and by bike. I love getting out for runs and rides, often with my kids tucked safely inside a stroller or trailer. I do my share of chauffeuring them around in the minivan, too. In all situations, cars that travel at a safe speed allow drivers more time to react, and in the event of a crash, reduce the risk of serious injury. Safe speeds also help to offset the dangers posed by increased vehicle weight and ubiquitous smartphones. We have an urgent need to improve 77th Street pedestrians, and a reduced speed is the first necessary step. In its current format, 77th Street divides east Richfield and wedges some of our lowest-income neighbors between a 60 mile per hour highway, 494, and a 40 mile per hour highway of our own creation, 77th Street. Contending with these speeds at crosswalks endangers everyone. A reduction to 30 miles per hour would be consistent with the west side of town. Slowing cars down will help us begin to treat this area fairly and repair the division it has caused. Thank you for all your dedication to making Richfield safer for us all. And my apologies for missing that. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. So is there anyone else that wishes to speak for open forum? All right, and we're finished with that, and we've approved the agenda. So next, it is my pleasure to present the Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award and proclamation to BJ Skug. So BJ, if you could join me up front. I don't know if you want to hold the award while we're reading the proclamation. So we're very proud to give you this award, and I'm going to read through the proclamation, and that explains all the things that you've been doing and why you've received this award. Whereas BJ Skug has received the Fourth Annual Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award for his commitment to the Richfield community, and whereas BJ Skug grew up in Richfield, graduated from Richfield High School in 2008, earned a bachelor's degree in organization communication from Bethel University in 2012, and with his wife Lexi, is proud to call Richfield home. And whereas BJ has served both professionally and personally in the areas of community engagement, education, and youth development for over a decade, primarily in Richfield, and whereas BJ is the founder and executive director of the Richfield Leadership Network, RLN, a nonprofit dedicated to strengthening community connectedness within Richfield, and whereas BJ's vision for RLN began in 2019 with efforts focused on highlighting local Richfield leaders. In 2022, RLN expanded its area of impact by partnering with the Twin Cities Social Cohesion Initiative. The three areas of focus for RLN are now: community, connectivity, community leadership, and community space. And whereas BJ strives to be a relational router and centers his work around the four Cs: connectivity, collaboration, creativity, and community, he believes in the interconnectedness of these four words or ideas. And whereas BJ serves on the Community Services Commission and is the Community Services Commission liaison to the Arts Commission, he sits on the board for Richfield Penfest as well as M Health Fairview's Community Advisory Committee, focused on community health and health equity. And whereas BJ can be found raising funds for projects like Murals in the City or new basketball hoops through his annual Hoop Local Tournament, which raised thousands of dollars for Richfield parks, and whereas BJ has been previously recognized with the following awards: the caring community member in 2014, the award for community agent in 2019, and the community service of the year in 2022. Now, therefore, I, Mary Supple, Mayor of the City of Richfield, and the Richfield City Council members do hereby award you this proclamation for your service demonstrating your commitment to the core values of the city of Richfield, proclaimed the 12th day of December 2023. Congratulations on receiving the Community Builder Award.
Yeah, I just briefly want to say thank you, Mayor Supple, council members, city staff, all of the personnel departments I've had the privilege of partnering with. And to Ms. Garcia, I don't know if she's here, I don't think she's here tonight, but I want to thank her for just the legacy that she has left for this city, her longevity of leadership here, and setting such a path for someone like myself and so many others that love this city so dearly to follow in her footsteps. To my community, my people, my friends, my family, my colleagues, those who are here tonight, thank you for your generous support, your partnership, your willingness to dream and scheme and be collaborators together. I wouldn't be up here without you. So I'm very honored to receive this award, and it really means a lot to me. Thank you.
If you'd be willing to get your picture taken and have all your supporters come up and surround you while you're having a picture taken.
...to see that he was able to move into Richfield and even put down more roots here. And so he has been present in so many ways and leading in so many ways, and also, as his Leadership Network title would point toward, has been consistently about building up others' leadership, too, and that's been very felt, and I appreciate it.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? Then I'm going to go ahead and say, BJ, you've been an inspiration to all of us, and thank you so much for everything you do. We were just talking about the coat drive that you, together with some other community leaders, put together, and it's just every time you turn around, there's some other inspiring thing going on. So thank you so much for all your leadership. All right, so we'll now move on to the consent calendar. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider to approve the renewal of the 2024 licenses for on-sale intoxicating club wine and 3.2% malt liquor licenses. For on-sale intoxicating club Sunday license holders, Alteavon, Fireside Foundry, Frenchman's Pub, Giordano's, Los Sanchez Taqueria, Lyndale Smokehouse, Pizza Luce, Protagonist Kitchen and Bar, and BFW has a club license. On-sale wine, on-sale 3.2% license holders, Devani's, Joyce Potaya, Kataki, My Burger, Patrick's Bakery, Red Pepper, Sandy's Tavern, and Tomo Mojo Grill. Item B, consider to approve the renewal of the 2024 licenses for off-sale 3.2% malt liquor and secondhand goods dealers doing business in Richfield. The secondhand goods dealers are GameStop and Wedding Day Diamonds. The licenses to sell 3.2% liquor off-sale, Asal Winner Gas Pump and Munch, La Viquita Two, La Viquita Short Stop, Portland Food Mart, and Target Corporation. Item C, consider the adoption of a resolution accessing, I'm sorry, accepting, grants and donations received by the Richfield Recreation Services and Community Development Departments in 2023, and authorizing staff to administer the funds in accordance with any applicable grant agreements and terms prescribed by donors. Item D, consider approval of a resolution establishing a new special revenue fund to track receipt and spending of one-time public safety aid included in the 2023 Minnesota State Omnibus Tax Bill. Item E, consider approval of a resolution establishing a streetlight user fee fund to track operations of the streetlight lighting system. Item F, consider approval of the COVID-19 Response Services Agreement, First Amendment with the city of Bloomington. Item G, consider approval of a Fourth Amendment to the agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of public health services for the city of Richfield for 2024. Item H, consider the approval of a resolution of opposition of proposed legislation, HR 3557, the American Broadband Act of 2023, that would limit cities' right-of-way compensation and management authorities, owning powers, cable franchising authority, and property rights, and would provide broadband providers an unprecedented access to state and local public property without any requirements to serve, unserved, and underserved community members. Item I, consider approval of a contract with Flock Safety and the Richfield Department of Public Safety for implementation of cameras throughout the city. Item J, consider approval of a contract renewal with Adessa Minneapolis for 2023, 2024, for auctioning forfeited vehicles from public safety police. Item K, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing Richfield Public Safety Police Department to accept donations from enlisted agencies, businesses, and private individuals for designated uses. And I submit all these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'd so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I did want to say thank you to all the people and groups that made the donations. We had two items where we were receiving donations, and so we are very grateful for that generosity on behalf of the whole city. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I do want to compliment staff on figuring out a more efficient way to do all of the licenses, because we used to, I think, go through them each individually. So thank you. All right, so next, we're going to move on to the public hearing and consider and approve the renewal of the 2024 pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated, 7529 Lyndale Avenue South. And so I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, the city manager, do you have a staff report on this?
Not, do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
The bookmarks are not working.
That was why we were asking you to read it, because we can't get to it.
Can't get to it.
It's page 127.
Okay, so if we just go to page 127, then we could probably read it ourselves. We have an oops.
Okay.
All right, I think we're set to go. We've figured out our technical glitch, so if you want to go ahead and read it, Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, this is for the item for council consideration would be the public hearing. On October 4th, 2023, the city received the application materials for the renewal of pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated, 7529 Lyndale Avenue South. All required information and documents have been provided. All licensing fees have been received. The public safety director has reviewed the background information and attached documents and approves of its contents and sees no basis for denial. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in the audience for this? Yes, could you come to your podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes, please.
All right, so we've opened the public hearing.
Opened the public hearing, sorry.
Thank you for giving me this time. I'm just here, I don't really have any comments to make or anything, but as you all know, Mark has shown up here every year for, I think, 24, 25 years now. This evening, he couldn't be here due to a death in the family, so it is just myself, and he wanted to have me be here in case you have any questions or if there's anything that needed to be done, and just to show our respects.
Can you introduce yourself, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is John Kunst. I've been the manager at Metro Pawn for over 20 years, and that's at 7529 Lyndale Avenue. Come on down. But that's about all I have to say.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing?
Is there anyone else online that wishes to speak?
There is not.
All right, we will close the public hearing then.
So is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed.
And we will make a motion now to approve the consideration for council.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the renewal of 2024 pawnbroker and secondhand goods dealer licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun Incorporated at 7529 Lyndale Avenue South. All right, is there any discussion? All right, Simon, or Councilmember Troutman, excuse me.
Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Kunst for coming, and please convey our condolences to Mr. Nichols, and appreciate that you, and he comes every year, but just, he has my condolences.
All right, any other comments? And also thank you for the work that you do in cooperation with our public safety departments, because you have a very good reputation. We appreciate it. All right, any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved the renewal. Thank you. All right, next, we're going to move on to item six, and I'm going to turn that over to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider confirmation of the appointment of Carl Hugh Miller as Recreation Services Director for the city of Richfield. Staff conducted an external recruitment to fill the position of Recreation Services Director following Amy Markle's departure in October of 2023. The process was very competitive, with 26 applicants narrowed to five for first interviews and four for second interviews, and two finalists for a final interview. Interim Director Hugh Miller impressed at every step of the recruitment process, demonstrating strong vision and a thoughtful, detailed approach to addressing recreation services challenges and opportunities. He also demonstrated a strong commitment to Richfield's values and has excelled in his role as interim director for the past three months, leading the department despite being short-staffed three positions and preparing for major projects in 2024. Mr. Hugh Miller has 20 years' experience in the recreation profession, serving as the Recreation Program Manager for Richfield for the past year. Before that, served increasingly more responsible roles at Three Rivers Park District since 2015. Would staff like to add anything for this item?
I do, thank you, Councilmember. We had, as I wrote in the staff report, a very competitive process. We involved 10 staff people in the panels. Interim Director Hugh Miller was the strong first choice, and also, he has been doing the job for the past three months and leading the department well despite being short-staffed. Of course, he has big shoes to fill. You know, Amy Markle did a wonderful job with the department, but I feel very confident in my recommendation that he will continue that strong leadership.
Thank you. I will make the motion that we confirm the appointment of Carl Hugh Miller as the Recreation Services Director for the city of Richfield.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Welcome, and I think we can now officially call you Director Hugh Miller. So congratulations. Next. Next, we'll move on to item seven, and it's on page 133 in the agenda, if you're looking for that, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. And Mayor, could you say the name or the number for the memo?
It's agenda item seven, and it's on page 133 in the agenda.
133, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor, and this is to consider the approval of an agreement between the city of Richfield and HGA for professional services in the design of Woodlake Nature Center. An invitation-only RFP, or request for proposals, was distributed to six qualified firms for architectural and engineering services for the design and construction administration of the new nature center building at Woodlake. And through a review of the proposals, a review of the proposals was made, and three firms were interviewed by a panel of city staff consisting of technical experts from public works, community development, and recreation services. Staff then contacted references for each of the firms. Through this process, HGA was selected for the project due to their technical expertise, experience with similar-scale projects, and being the most cost-effective finalist. So the motion is to authorize the mayor and city manager to finalize and execute a contract in the amount of $1,658,296 between the city of Richfield and HGA to perform professional services in the design and construction administration of the new building for Woodlake Nature Center, and authorize the city manager to approve a contract with changes up to $175,000. up to $175,000 without further city council consideration. Does staff have anything to add before we make the motion?
Carl Hugh Miller, Recreation Services Director. The only thing that we would have to add is that...
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. The only thing we have to add is that the draft has been reviewed by legal counsel, Mary Teigen, and that any final contract will also be reviewed before the signing.
Very good. Well, that being said, I would make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Whalen?
I'll just say for anyone in the public that's interested, there will be far more public engagement and education coming, but you can also, the work session right before this meeting, which will also get, the recording will get posted within the next week or so, has plenty of additional information and a presentation about it for folks that are curious, but also, reach out to us. There will be ongoing opportunities to weigh in and get updates throughout 2024.
All right, is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item eight, which is on page 162 of the Agenda Packet, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Hafer Leary.
Thank you. This item is to consider approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending Section 1305 of Richfield City Code, authorizing the city engineer to set speed limits on municipal roadways. This ordinance is one of three actions on the December 12th, 2023 council agenda related to reduction of speeds in Richfield. Staff were directed by council to explore reductions in municipal speed limits under Minnesota statutes, Chapter 16914. In order for changes to take effect, the council must legislate the responsibility for setting speed limits. Other local cities, including Edina and St. Louis Park, have legislated this responsibility with an ordinance which states the city engineer shall set speed limits for local streets in accordance with Minnesota statutes. The proposed ordinance would authorize the Richfield City Engineer to set speed limits for local streets within the city. Adoption's ordinance would allow the city engineer to implement the proposed citywide speed limit changes developed over the course of three work sessions, October 11th, 2022, and May 9th and October 24th of 2023, and summarized in the staff presentation from the October 2023 work session. Staff presentations are attached to the report. The procedures developed by staff would result in 25 mile-per-hour speed limits on most city-owned roadways. The procedure utilizes optional considerations in the state manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices to set a maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour on roads that either have a marked or designated on-street bike lane, have no sidewalks, or have two-vehicle-through lanes, either divided or undivided. On all other city streets, the speed limit would be set by rounding the median speed to the nearest 5 mile-per-hour value. This procedure also creates a process for residents to request a lower speed limit in their neighborhood or along a defined collector and arterial corridor in the city. Currently, there is not council consensus on the staff recommended speed limit on 76th and 77th Streets. Staff is providing an alternate option specific to 76th and 77th for council consideration. To conform with Minnesota statutes, the alternate option will need to be passed by resolution, while the city engineer will set the speed limits on all other streets per the ordinance. Staff has also provided a resolution to rescind the urban district designation on Lindale Avenue, so that the Lindale Avenue speed limit that staff have chosen through this process can be established by the city engineer according to the proposed ordinance. And I believe they were going to have a map of the proposed speed limits, right?
It was up before the meeting, so...
All right, does staff have anything to add at this time prior to the motion?
Would staff have anything to add at this time?
Okay, I will make the motion that we approve the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 1305 of the Richfield City Code, authorizing the city engineer to set speed limits on municipal roadways.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Whalen?
Just to double, cover our bases, or whatever cliche you want to use, the image that is up, I know some of the type is possibly pretty small for folks watching. It would be 25 nearly everywhere in the city, except for the north-south roads of Penn, Nicklet, and Portland, and the east-west roads of 66th and 77th on the east side, and then up to 76 when it is the main road on the west side of town. And those have some slight variations, but generally, that is the grid that this would create, with nearly every road in the city being 25.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Hafer Leary?
And again, just to add on to Councilmember Whalen's comments, we asked staff to show the county roads for context, but we are not modifying them as part of this process, and it is possible the county would reduce those in the future to be more in line with our speed limits, and I hope they do if anyone from the county ever hears me, hears me in this conversation. I will say, just in general, obviously, we've got more to discuss about 76th and 77th, but I will save it for that item. I support this. I think this is a big step in the right direction, and I'm grateful that staff has spent so much time on this, as the staff report notes, this has been going on for more than a year. I think it's a better policy for that effort, and I'm really grateful for staff for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Other items that people would like to discuss? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be really brief too, because we have kind of a multi-part agenda, but I just want to say this is really good policy as a father of young children, and now getting to be older children, but who've raised my kids here in Richfield. It's a really big deal, and this creates a safer environment for kids, for senior citizens, for people that move slower, and it really does not inconvenience residents. Yet, we're a very small city, so, you know, at two miles, the 5 mile-an-hour, 10 mile-an-hour change, you know, we're talking about seconds, but also potentially lives saved, so I think it's really good policy.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? So, I noticed later in the staff reports, it talks about the state requirements, and one of them is to have a consistent and understandable manner, and I think this is much better than some of the earlier iterations that we looked at in work sessions, and so I'm really glad that we've moved to this point. So, I was struggling with an item that's going to come up later for 76th and 77th Streets, so what I did is I decided to reach out to some people that live along 77th Street, because they're the people that are most impacted by that, and try and get some feedback. And it's not a scientific poll, but it was interesting, the feedback I got actually applies more to this discussion, so I wanted to share this feedback. So, when I was asking them, I was asking about 77th, and they, most of them agreed that 40 miles per hour was way too fast, and this recommendation would drop that from 40, so they were happy about that. And they were really supportive of lowering speed limits across the board in the city, and so that kind of was pretty much unanimous, that everybody said we should go slower. There was agreement that an education campaign is really critical, because they wanted to avoid the enforcement issues. They didn't want to have anybody be surprised and then have a whole slew of people getting tickets when they didn't realize that the speed limit had suddenly dropped. And so that was like a huge thing of, how are you going to do the education? How are you going to let people know? And even after that education, will you have a period where you give warnings instead of starting to ticket everybody all the time? And so, those were the things. There was also great agreement on the need to make pedestrian crossings safer in the corridor. That kept coming up. It wasn't so much people were concerned about the speeds, it was, we got to make it safer to cross at the places that we are crossing. I got some unsolicited concerns when I was asking about speed limits, and people said, well, you need to fix the Portland Avenue Bridge, because it's really dangerous and that it's scary to walk across that bridge. And when I told them that, yes, that's actually going to be fixed as part of the 494 project, they were greatly relieved, because they said it is highly dangerous to be walking on that bridge, and you feel like you're about to get hit. They also brought up concerns about how the 494 changes are going to impact that corridor, because they're wondering if suddenly they're going to get a lot more traffic as they narrow, like, close off some of the entrances and exits, that more people will be coming down the street right past their houses. And so, what they wanted to do is to make sure we monitored things, so we could make adjustments if there were unintended consequences. So, kind of that whole theme of, if we change something, make sure we're looking into it and make sure it did what we wanted and not an unintended consequence. There were also, we're really excited to hear there was going to be a pedestrian bridge across Chicago Avenue, because a lot of people weren't aware of that. And then, they also brought up, well, if we can go for grants, maybe we should go for a grant to try and get some flashing beacons there too, so that we can dream for that one. I don't think that's one of our current grant proposals, but that was suggested by residents. They said that portion on the east side of town, the sidewalks, do have some space between them and the driving, rather than on the west side, where the sidewalks are right up against the road. And they said that helps with safety, but there's still a lot of kids on bikes, and so they are concerned about that. And that they said that mostly older kids are crossing the street to meet with their friends and neighborhoods on the other side of 77th, that, let's see, that would be the north side of that. And they also asked, you know, talked about things like bus stops, like, they were glad the elementary bus stops were on 78th, and they were glad that was going to go down to 25 miles per hour, because they were actually more concerned about safety on 78th than they were on 77th. And then, let's see, the last one is, more people wanted 35 than 30, but the main concern was to drop it from 40. So, everybody said it has to go down, 40 is too high, and the other thing was to work on the safe crossings. So, anyway, I just thought, since people were giving us feedback, I'd throw that all into the discussion. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, so the motion before us is to approve the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 1305 of the Richfield City Code, authorizing the city engineer to set speed limits on municipal roadways. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we have approved that motion. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number nine, which begins on page 266, and we will turn it over to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a motion to consider a second reading and summary publication of an ordinance amendment to allow micro-units as an accessory use to approved religious institutions. And during the 2023 session, the legislature passed a bill authorizing religious institutions to construct micro-unit dwellings on their property. Development of these micro-unit dwellings are being referred to as, quote, sacred communities, and they're intended to provide additional means for faith communities to serve chronically homeless and extremely low-income individuals living in community with volunteers. In summary, the new law sets the following minimum standards for these developments. One, micro-units are defined as no more than 400 gross square feet in size, with exterior materials comparable with standard residential construction. The units are required to have toilet, electricity, smoke, and carbon monoxide detectors. Between 1/3 and 40% of the units must be occupied by designated volunteers, and they must provide the city with a plan that outlines water and sewer management, parking, lighting, and access by emergency vehicles, and security and severe weather protocols. The city cannot prohibit sacred communities. Law permits cities to designate these settlements as either conditional uses or permitted uses, but default to conditional if not otherwise stated. If allowed to default to conditional use, the city would have no ability to impose any conditions, creating pointless and futile public hearings. Therefore, staff is proposing an ordinance that would allow sacred communities as an accessory use to religious institutions. This would avoid a frustrating and pointless public hearing process. Also, by designating settlements as an accessory use to religious institutions, the settlement could not continue if the religious institution ceased. The zoning code allows religious institutions to use conditional use in the R Low Density Residential, the MR2 Multi-Family Residential, and the MR3 High Density Multi-Family Residential Districts. Religious institutions are also listed as a permitted use in the C2 General Commercial Zoning Districts. The proposed ordinance creates a definition of the term sacred community as defined by the law and adds language to each of these districts to specify that sacred communities are allowed as accessory uses to approved religious institutions. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on November 27th, and no one from the public spoke at the public hearing. The Planning Commission felt that the requirement for the units to be on or contiguous to the grounds of the primary worship location was an important part of the legislation. The Planning Commission had a number of questions regarding impacts. There are currently 16 religious institutions in the city where sacred communities would be possible. See the attached map. There is no set limit to the number of micro-units on a particular religious institution that they may construct. Rental licenses cannot be required, and staff has not received any inquiries from interested institutions. The Commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance amendment as proposed. Does staff have anything to add?
Thank you, I do not.
Okay, thank you. That being the case, I move that we approve the second reading of an ordinance amendment to allow micro-units as an accessory use to approved religious institutions and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hafer Leary?
I'll just say briefly, recognizing that, you know, there's no value in us opposing this, since the state would force us to do it anyway, but this is an example where I think it's unfortunately specific from the state, and I think that there are better ways for Richfield to be able to address deeply affordable housing than this law. I will vote for it, because this is what the state has told us to do, but I think this is unfortunate and an example where local context really varies, and I wish they'd given us more wiggle room to be able to find the right context for us. I do agree, and I'm grateful for staff's recommendation to not do the pointless conditional use permit. When I was on the Planning Commission, we had a couple of those for the small cell towers before we quickly gave that up, so I think it's best we just avoid that.
Thank you. Other comments? I did have one question. What happens if the state statute changes? We've written this where we're making it a permitted use, what happens if the state statute changes?
Madam Mayor, the way that the ordinance is written, it refers specifically to the state statute, so if the statute was repealed, it would no longer have a reference, we would obviously go back and do some housekeeping, but if the section of state statute was repealed, then this would no longer refer to anything, and they would no longer be allowed. Does city attorney have anything to add?
No, Mayor and Council, I would agree. I think we would likely come back and ask the Council to repeal the ordinance if the statute changed or went away. So, I agree with that.
Thank you. And I would concur with Councilmember Hafer Leary, that I think it's pointless to have a public hearing if we really don't have any authority to change anything. That just causes distrust in government, and I think that's not a good thing to do. And I think, I would urge our legislators to be very careful about using local preemption, because there are important things that are different in each city, and it's important to have some power to make adjustments to laws. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we've approved the second reading and authorized the summary publication. All right, next, we'll move on to Agenda Item 10, which is on page 275, and that will go to Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, this is to consider the adoption of a resolution rescinding the designation of Lindale Avenue from 62nd Street to 77th Street as an urban district pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 169.14, effective June 15th, 2024. This is one of the three actions on the December 12th, 2023 council agenda related to the reduction of speed limits in Richfield. In July 2020, the council adopted Resolution Number 11750, which designated Lindale Avenue from 62nd Street to 77th Street in the City of Richfield as an urban district pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 169.14, and concurrently set the legal speed limit on the corridor to 30 miles per hour. miles per hour. In order to set the speed limit on Lindale Avenue to twenty-five miles per hour as recommended by the city's engineering, traffic, and safety analysis pursuant to Minnesota statutes section one sixty-nine point fourteen subdivision five H, the city council must rescind the urban district designation and thirty mile per hour speed limit. Does the staff have any comments on this?
We're available for questions, thank you.
All right. The motion before us would be to adopt the resolution rescinding the designation of Lindale Avenue from Sixty-second Street to Seventy-seventh Street as an urban district pursuant to Minnesota statutes section one sixty-nine point fourteen, effective June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and is there any discussion, questions? Councilmember Whalen?
Um, I had a question. I had not read this closely enough before, so sorry if I missed the reason for this, but why June fifteenth?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember Whalen, I was just thinking I should have added there that that's our target effective date for the citywide changeover.
Okay. Would, I guess if we had no date on this, and it just disappeared now, would that, I, I guess I don't know how likely it is that we'd be able to do anything sooner, but it just seemed like a unnecessary timeline.
I, I guess we were thinking we would make all the changes at the same time and as part of our communication plan.
Sure. Okay.
And I don't know, Mary, I think effective, if there's a change, once they repeal it, does it automatically revert back to? Well, I would revert back to thirty-five, I guess, unless Joe set the speed limit differently. It gets kind of complicated.
Okay, so it, it is the moment this is repealed, the speed limit changes, those are connected?
Yeah, that's why we went with it. Yeah, maybe Joan has talked.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, Mary, city, uh, mayor and city council members. Joe Powers, city engineer. So, like Kristen said, or Director Asher said, it's a little bit complicated, but essentially the only reason that Lindale is thirty miles per hour right now is because it has that urban district designation. So, if we were to rescind it, um, be, we could either go two routes. We could revert to thirty-five miles per hour, which is what this roadway was designed for in previous traffic studies, would have set the speed on Lindale at thirty-five miles per hour. The other option would be to designate immediately twenty-five miles per hour. As Director Asher noted, we think it's more consistent and better public education policy to set all of the speeds and change everything to twenty-five miles per hour at the same time. So, that June fifteenth date was picked to allow us the time to roll out the public education campaign that we've mentioned, and procure and manufacture all of the physical materials that we need for changing speed limit signs, as well as changing signal timing on traffic signals throughout the city.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um, just to clarify what the deadline means, is that basically like the enforcement deadline, or would, like, do you wait until June fifteenth to start putting up signs, or do you put up signs so that on June fifteenth it's ready to be enforceable?
So, the, the plan at this point is that we would likely roll out the sign changes over a number of weeks, two to three weeks. It's not really realistic to change out hundreds of signs overnight. But we would communicate that that June fifteenth date is the date where the new speeds become effective, and we would at them point, at that point, either start enforcement or start increased public education. That's a detail that will work out with public safety over the next months.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um, I just wanted to say, I was delighted in twenty twenty when the council passed this, and ironically, I'm delighted to support repealing it for very different reasons now. So, it was a good direction to go from thirty-five to thirty, and even better to go from thirty to twenty-five, so.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and we've adopted the resolution. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven, which is on page two hundred seventy-eight, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item is to consider the alternative to the staff recommendation to set the speed limit on Seventy-sixth and Seventy-seventh Streets to thirty-five miles per hour, and instead adopt a resolution designating Seventy-sixth Street from Xerxes Avenue to Seventy-seventh Street, and Seventy-seventh Street from Six, Seventy-sixth Street to Highway Seventy-seven, a, quote, urban district pursuant to Minnesota statutes section one sixty-nine point one four, and set the speed limit at thirty miles per hour effective June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So, this, again, is one of the three actions tonight relating to speed limits. The Minnesota statute subdivision that's being used for this states that a city that uses the authority under this subdivision must develop procedures to set speed limits based on the city's safety, engineering, and traffic analysis. Staff have performed a safety, engineering, and traffic analysis that led to a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit recommendation for Seventy-sixth and Seventy-seventh Streets east of Penn Avenue, and not including the section of Seventy-sixth Street east of Seventy-seventh Street. Um, sorry, I'm losing my directions as I follow that. City council has indicated they may desire to set the speed limit along this corridor at thirty miles per hour. In consultation with the city attorney, staff have determined that the city council may elect to designate the corridor as an urban district pursuant to Minnesota statute one sixty-nine point zero one one and one sixty-nine point one four, and direct the Public Works Department to set the limit at thirty miles per hour and add signage accordingly. If a street meets the requirements of a, quote, urban district and is designated as such by the council, a thirty mile per hour speed limit may be set pursuant to one sixty-nine point one four. So, I mean, that's fairly thorough. Does staff have anything to add?
Uh, Mayor, Council, we're just available for questions, I guess.
All right, thank you. I, I will make the motion to adopt a resolution designating Seventy-sixth Street from Xerxes Avenue to Seventy-seventh Street, and Seventy-seventh Street from Seventy-sixth Street to Highway Seventy-seven, an urban district pursuant to Minnesota statutes section one sixty-nine point one four, and set the speed limit at thirty miles per hour effective June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second, and is there any discussion? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I'm sure you've heard much of this from me before, but to reiterate, I, I do think we should pass this. I appreciate staff's process, and I know that they did not take this decision lightly. And I think, in some ways, we're really all on the same page of this, this corridor. We, we made mistakes in the nineties, this corridor is not great. I really appreciate Mayor Seppel going out and talking to residents who are directly impacted by this. It's just kind of a question of sort of order of operations. We know that changes are needed on Seventy-seventh Street, but I do believe a useful first step is lowering the speed limit. I think, as one of the letter writers mentioned, thirty-five is, again, ten miles per hour over other major streets in the city like Lindale Avenue, like Seventieth Street. Just to reiterate, this corridor is a concentration of lower-income residents, residents of color, and it is uniquely harmed by the infrastructure of our city, between the wall, between four ninety-four, between even the, the bridge crossing that Mayor Seppel noted. We have neglected this part of town, and I do worry that continuing a thirty-five mile per hour speed limit there is continuing that neglect. I think thirty is the right direction. I think it sets the stage for bigger changes that we need, and I think it's consistent. And why don't just think, I know it's consistent across the corridor. It, it's seven miles of this corridor, five and a half miles of that, or five miles of that are thirty miles per hour, that will be thirty miles per hour. All of Edina's section, which doesn't go by apartment buildings like this, that goes through industrial parks, that is thirty miles per hour. The west end of town, of single-family homes, that gets thirty miles per hour. I believe that the east end of town deserves that same consideration. I appreciate that thirty miles per hour is a bit of a challenge. I, I have personally driven it many times now at thirty, and making a point of trying to do that to understand exactly how it feels. I, I think it is appropriate to challenge our residents on this street to drive a little bit slower than feels natural because it ultimately leads to safer crossing conditions, it leads to a better neighborhood, and it sets us on the stage towards, you know, remedying the harm of the street. So, I really hope my council colleagues will join me in supporting this resolution.
Okay, is there other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to appreciate and lift up Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's, uh, commendation that we at least have the consideration that our neighbors in Edina have for their light industrial area for our resident, which is, I, and also I just want to also lift up what, what he mentioned, which is also that I think I really appreciate staff's entire process in going through this, their recommendation, it's brought in good faith on their best analysis. But I, I have to agree and even state more strongly, just the profound injustice of how that part of our city has been constructed and the urgency that we have to, to repair that structural deficit, where we have, you know, by some estimates, you know, up to fifteen or eighteen percent, which is, you know, just under, you know, one in, one in five of, of our residents that live in a certain area. And when we, we built that highway the way we did, or that, that road, we did it in a way that makes it less livable in, for, for, for those residents. And so, by lowering this to thirty miles an hour, I, at least as according to my, to my vote, I think it helps to establish the urgency, which I know we all share, I know staff shares that, too. But I think it is really important, and I'm, I'm really eager for us to be creative with what we can do to communicate that speed and make that, that road, uh, correspond with a speed that is appropriate for that, for that corridor, so I would, I would really support this, this alternative.
All right, other comments or questions? Councilmember Whalen?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I would echo what's been said. I, the piece that I'll add is just that, for, that I think, I mean, some of our other reasoning talks about bicycle lanes and things. I don't, I don't know that Seventy-seventh on the east side of town is necessarily going to become a, a strong choice for bike riders, but I think particularly, uh, by necessity, there are a lot of people that choose to walk on Seventy-seventh Street there, that there are the only parks accessible for, for folks living in the apartments there. Are on the opposite side of Seventy-seventh Street, um, there's numerous bus stops that are on the opposite side, one of which does not have a stoplight or any, any system there. And so, I totally agree that there is, there is more to be done. This is not, this doesn't magically create safety or even create people driving slower, but I think it's the right, right step. And then, the only other thing I'd say, I don't know how complicated tech-wise it is for staff to put the map back up on the screen of the speed limits, but again, if anyone was struggling with the verbal descriptions of the street, it really feels like a singular road, but because of the, the curve near thirty-five W, it's, it would basically be making that orange left-to-right line across the south side of town into a fully blue line that, um, instead of being thirty-five miles an hour for part and thirty at the far east side, uh, what we're discussing would make it thirty throughout the whole city.
All right, is there other discussion or questions? Councilmember Troutman.
I was just going to add one, one small note, just as a, as, as a dad, as I mentioned before, of, of kids in Richfield, there is, there is an age at which you let your children cross the street without, without parents, and the difference between a forty mile an hour and a thirty-five mile an hour, and actually, it, it actually, there's not a perfect measure for this, but it translates into years. You know, when you let an eight-year-old, or a nine-year-old, or a ten-year-old cross the street, or when you'd let a fourteen-year-old or a thirteen-year-old take their little brother or little sister across the street. And so, by lowering this, not to be too melodramatic, but we're actually adding years to children's independent play when we make a road that's slower and safer. Uh, so just one more reason why I think this is, this is a good, good decision.
All right, other comments or questions? Um, so, like I said, I've been struggling with this because I do agree that back when we constructed this road, we made some mistakes, and we set it up so that it wasn't a good situation. But I also want to be careful about unintended consequences, and when I was talking to people, their big thing was that it shouldn't be forty. A lot of people were happy with thirty-five or thirty because they said it shouldn't be forty. And so, um, at this point, I, I would still go with thirty-five, but it's pretty obvious that I'm going to get outvoted. So, what I would ask is that we monitor for unintended consequences, and we make sure that what we're doing is correct. So, if, if we start having, like, a lot of equity issues as far as traffic enforcement, and we have a, a huge amount of people being ticketed, that we do something about that, whether it's education or whatever, but we monitor for unintended consequences. So, that would be the ask that I have, and I'm fully supportive. I think it's great that it's dropping from forty because forty is way too fast. So, you know, I'm more comfortable with thirty-five, but it sounds like my colleagues are more comfortable with thirty, and that, that's fine as well because both are reasonable things. So, and I think we're heading in the right direction. So, is there anybody else that would like to add anything? Okay, so the motion before us is to adopt a resolution designating Seventy-sixth Street from Xerxes Avenue to Seventy-seventh Street, and Seventy-seventh Street from Seventy-sixth to Highway Seven as an urban district pursuant to Minnesota statutes section one sixty-nine point one four, and set the speed limit at thirty miles per hour effective June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. So, um, earlier we voted to make this stretch, as it was on the map, was thirty-five and then thirty, so this would change it all to thirty if you vote yes, and if you vote no, it would be going, going back with the previous staff recommendation that we took up in Agenda Item Eight. So, is everybody clear on what they're voting on? All right, any further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and I'm going to say nay, and so the, um, resolution has passed. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item Twelve, which is on page two eighty-two, and I'll turn that over to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your impromptu page numbers, that was very helpful. Uh, this item is to consider resolutions approving the twenty twenty-three revised and twenty twenty-four proposed budgets, tax levy, and related resolutions. On September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, the city council approved and certified a preliminary tax levy of twenty-eight million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which included a levy for general fund operations of twenty-two million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, a debt service levy of four million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, an equipment and technology levy of one million, two hundred and eight thousand dollars, and an economic development agency levy of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Accordingly, the twenty twenty-four preliminary gross levy represents a five-point-eight-nine percent increase from the twenty twenty-three gross levy. The final tax levy of twenty-eight million, three hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars must now be considered and approved by the city council. Taxpayers have received individual parcel-specific tax notices as part of the truth and taxation hearing process. The city Richfield held its twenty twenty-three truth and taxation hearing on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P.M. At this meeting, staff presented, and the council discussed the proposed budget. While finalizing the twenty twenty-four budget document, the staff carefully reviewed every budget at fund level and department level. It was discovered that the following capital budget item needed to be revised that matches with requests submitted to the respective project managers. The change has been made in the budget document presented to the city council for adoption. Please note that this change has no impact on the general fund budget and the tax levy. The total of the twenty twenty-four capital improvement budget in, has increased from seven million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to seven million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. That item is described in the report regarding city hall HVAC compressor replacements, and it's a change of seventy-five thousand. Included for the council's consideration are salary increases for non-represented employee pay plans. The proposed increases are three percent increase for the management and general services and specialized pay and specialized pay plans. The increases are effective for the first full pay period of January two thousand and twenty-four. Does staff have anything to add prior to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. As you know, this budget's a long process. We've presented many times and had a lot of discussions about it. It starts back in May. It's always challenging to match limited resources with ever-increasing needs. We did present at the truth and taxation meeting already, but just a few highlights from that. The extremely tight labor market continues to be challenging and drive up costs. That's about seventy percent of our general fund budget. There were no new debt issues this year and only one staff addition. Additional local government aid really did help us to keep the levy increases lower than other cities. It was a five-point-eight-nine percent increase, and just to put that into context, this is our final levy percentage increase, but comparing it to proposed levies, Hennessy County has forty-five cities, and we were lower than all but nine of those cities. And again, that's the proposed, but the proposed last year compared to the final, there was only a point-six percent reduction, so it gives you a flavor for where we're landing compared to other cities. Also, the state proposed average was eight-point-four percent. Again, that compares to our five-point-eight-nine percent increase. The impact is predicted to be an increase for Richfield taxpayers. It's about ninety-one dollars for an average home in Richfield. And then, I just do want to thank our finance director, Kamud Verma. She can't be here tonight because she is on vacation, a well-deserved vacation. Also, thanks to the department directors and their staff, they are the ones that put a lot of work into the detailed numbers. And finally, thank you to the council and the community for their review, your questions, and your guidance on the budget.
All right, I will make a motion that we adopt the resolutions approving the two thousand and twenty-three revised and two thousand and twenty-four proposed budgets, tax levy, and related resolutions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I will, once again, this is a bit of my soapbox, but ask that we not apologize for investing in important things. Obviously, no one is, or most people are not excited about their taxes going up, but I think we only reinforce that when we talk specifically about challenges we face and just numbers. And so, wanted to highlight, this year, one of the things I am most excited that we are investing in as a community in this budget is actual funding for our sustainability programming, that we know both that the environment, the world, needs us to be doing that work, and also, it is much more cost-effective to be addressing that now than just waiting for the impacts in the years to come. And specifically, I think, I wanted to lift up, I'm excited about, one of the ways that we are investing in that in a smart way is funding for a grant-writing position to access the funding that is available from the federal and state level, as well as other levels. But I'm really excited for that, and I'm excited that we are investing, that we are not having a scarcity mindset. We're investing cost of living increases for our staff when the cost of living has increased. And so, I, yeah, I think it's great to be transparent about the numbers, be responsible with how we're comparing to other communities, and also, I'm just really excited for where we're headed and the things that we're investing in together.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? All right, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I would just say, in partial response to Councilmember Wayland, I don't think we need to apologize for it, but I do want to say, I am grateful to the taxpayers for funding, you know, what keeps our city going. I don't think necessarily being the lowest levy increase itself needs to be a goal. The most important goal is funding our city appropriately, but it is a measure of financial responsibility, and I know that is important, and budgets are tight for many reasons for the same reasons. So, I support this budget. I think tax increases for the right reasons are appropriate, and I think these are for the right reasons, and they've been very carefully measured. I guess I also just want to specifically thank Director Verma for her work on this. I know there's been a lot of demands on her and her department, and this is a lot of work, so I hope she is enjoying her vacation, and please pass our thanks on to her.
Councilmember Troutman.
I'll just briefly add, as someone that grew up in our city, I'm really proud of the infrastructure investments that we've made, and as somebody that walks all over the city all the time, I just, I feel really proud of our city, and I know what our city, I remember what our city has looked like over the last three generations, and it's by virtually every measure, better and more beautiful, and sounder and stronger, and it falls on our community every several generations to decide whether we're going to retreat and disintegrate as a community or invest and move forward. And I'm really, just when I walk around the city, I'm really proud of how it looks, how it's better, how it's safer, and so, thank you to staff for guiding us, and for Director Asher, who just left, who's really guided a lot of that development and a lot of the infrastructure, not all of it certainly, but has been in that department, so I just want to recognize her leadership.
Any other comments or questions?
I would also like to agree with my colleagues in that I would like to thank the staff because I know we ask you to be very prudent and pragmatic and try and find the best way to use the resources that we have because we know that it takes a lot for our taxpayers to contribute that money, but I also think it's prudent when you make investments because you're planning long-term. It's not like it's just a short-term thing to think about the long-term effect, and so, I want to thank the taxpayers for allowing us to do that long-term planning through this budgeting process. Is there anybody else that has a question or a comment? All right, Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes, I also like to thank the staff too, because when you think about us living in the city or nearby, we kind of take for granted the services that are provided for us, but in talking to people in surrounding suburbs and cities near us, they always have very good things to say about Richfield, about their parks and their roads and their, especially at this time of year, you know, oh, how great the roads are when the snow hits, and, you know, what Public Works does, and, you know, the services that we provide and everything that we have. So, for such a small community, we do give a lot to the surrounding area. So, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, the motion before us is to adopt the resolutions approving the two thousand and twenty-three revised and two thousand and twenty-four proposed budgets, tax levy, and related resolutions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've passed the budget, so now, we don't have to say any more page numbers, and we'll turn it over to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to congratulate B.J. Skug. The award is really well-deserved. I've always enjoyed working with him, and I feel like he works really hard for Richfield. Last meeting, Rod Sathers spoke again about short-term rentals, and I provided an update that night. We were also communicating directly. Larry Ernstner also expressed concerns about the micro-units, and Mayor Supple followed up with him directly and made it clear that the state law preempts local authority. Mary Best also asked about changes to the TIF district for the RF sixty-four project. The specific question was about the nine-hundred-thousand-dollar note, and that was answered as part of the discussion that night. It was never issued for that portion of the TIF that became market value. Also, had just a general statement of frustration about TIF, and just to put that into context, our TIF districts, the property values have increased four hundred and sixty percent, so we do feel that they have been successful. And then, finally, I don't know if I'm allowed to give a hats off, but I wanted to give a hats off to Mayor Supple. In the last couple of weeks, she has really gone above and beyond in getting back to residents and even was able to get the mailboxes put back at the post office in a matter of days, so hats off to Mayor Supple.
We'll allow it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions for the City Manager? All right, thank you. So, now, we'll move on to claims and payroll.
I move claims and payroll.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we've approved claims and payroll, and now, we'll move on to the hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to lift up, as we head into the holiday season, whatever version you celebrate, or even if it's just, hopefully, you get some time off work, time to be with family, wanted to lift up our communications director, I'm not remembering her exact title, but Kate, and the work. We've got some holiday-themed events coming up, and particularly, just wanted to remind people of the ongoing good efforts to share what's happening in the city, both highlights from previous events and upcoming ones, that if you're on social media, would recommend following the city, and for those who are not, or if you want to do both, the email weekly newsletter that's been around now for a year or two, but don't think we've mentioned in a while, I think has just been a massive improvement in how we're getting regular reminders out to folks of what's going on, and so, hats off to everyone involved in that effort and encouragement for residents to sign up for that if you haven't yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Christiansen.
Yes, two things. One is a reminder, another city event coming up is the last indoor holiday market at Veterans Park this Saturday afternoon, Saturday morning, late afternoon, and also, featuring small businesses in the city, Leto's Burritos. Had a chance to go there this past Monday morning for breakfast. It was, I had never been there before, and it was really a great place there. We don't have that many breakfast places in the city, and it's nice that it's centrally located, and it's really good. Highly recommend it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you. I don't have any particular items other than to wish everyone happy holidays, and particularly just mention how much I enjoy seeing people's Christmas lights, winter lights. It does brighten up the whole city. It's not unique to Richfield, but it is a nice neighborly thing. And then, I just wanted to, if you see an exceptional display before tomorrow at noon, so I guess you better look on the way home, the city has a contest for the best holiday lights, and nominations are due tomorrow.
All right, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item I had similar to Councilmember Christiansen is just reminding folks that this Saturday is the last Saturday for the Richfield Winners Farmers Market, and I just wanted to lift up, as wonderful as the farm products are, the farmers' market is not just food, it's not just farm products. The Christmas trees, every year, were there. We bought our Christmas tree like we always do at Veterans Park, but I also found just gorgeous hand-stitched tennis shoes that were just beautifully colored. There's clothing there, there's jewelry there, so there are a lot of things. If you're looking for Christmas presents, it's a great spot, and it's the last week, this Saturday. So, if you're waiting for the last, last minute to buy your Christmas presents there, you will be disappointed, but if you go Saturday, it'll be great.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that if you're interested in serving on the HRA and the EDA, we're accepting applications through December fifteenth, so you can go onto the city website to the HRA, and there's a spot that you can apply for that. I also want to lift up Jennifer Anderson, who works for the city here and works with Bloomington Public Health, and also lift up Bloomington Public Health. We had a resident reach out with like a crisis that was going on in their family, and we didn't know what to do, so we turned to Jennifer, and she turned to Bloomington Public Health and provided all kinds of resources and support for this resident. So, I just want to do a shout-out to our Public Health Services and to Jennifer Anderson in particular. As was mentioned, we bought holiday lights. The Holiday Lights Parade is December fourteenth, so I believe that's Thursday at six-thirty P.M., and it starts over by the city garage, and then Wednesday, works its way around through down Seventieth Street, and then ends up over near Woodlake Nature Center, so if you're interested in doing that. And we already mentioned earlier about all the work that B.J. Skug was doing. He also has a team of other people that works together in the community, and they've done the Great Pumpkin giveaway that we did at a previous meeting, but they also just did the Winter Coat Drive. So, I was going to thank Carl Herman, the State Farm agent, Dave and Lisa Hintermeister, Steve Schneberger with Keller Williams Group, and the Richfield Leadership Network, because they've been doing a lot of community service events together, and they got literally hundreds of winter clothing items and coats to deliver around to various schools. So, thank you to all of them for all of their generosity and organizing that, so hats off to them. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody.